Okay, being seven o'clock, we're going to open up the public hearing for the district-wide safety plan. We've had this posted for approximately over a month or so. Do we have any discussion items that need to be, no, after, after it? Anybody in the audience have anything on the district-wide safety plan? Nobody? Okay, any board members? Anybody? Dan? Anything? Good?
I just, I guess, I will say one thing. Thanks to Kevin and the district-wide team, as well as our folks from Boise, everybody there for the work they put in to get that reviewed and updated for the board and for the committee to take a look at. That being said, if, whenever you're ready to close the hearing, we can close the hearing and...
We'll make a motion on this first.
We'll close the hearing and then we'll make the motion.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to close the hearing on the district-wide safety plan. So enter until that moment.
So let's, yeah, we'll convene the meeting and then we'll go from there.
Okay. So we're going to start, stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now that we're in regular session of the meeting, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the 2022-2023 district-wide safety plan. Do we have a motion? So move by Crystal, second. Seconded by Amanda, all in favor? Opposed? That carries.
Forty seconds tonight, right?
Yeah. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 5th, 2022. Motion? So move back, Amanda, seconded. By Brian, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries. We need a motion to accept an order filed the minutes of the committee on special education for 7/6, 7/12, 7/21, 7/25, and 7/26. You have a motion? So moved by Vince, seconded by Amanda, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. And we need a motion to accept an order filed the minutes of committee of preschool special education on 7/7, 2022. So moved by Amanda, seconded by... Seconded by Brian, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Anybody with public comments? We have one more? Oh, okay. I didn't see. All right, let me see, where is that one at? Because I don't have it on this one here, do I? Oh, yeah, I do. Okay. So did you, everybody had a chance to look at the reorganizational meeting of July 5th? Okay. So you saw that? Let me see if I can get this here, because it's a little different. You heard the recommendation, do we have a motion? To approve the minutes? So moved by Amanda.
Second.
By Crystal, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Okay. So I apologize, back to public comment. Anybody have anything? Okay. I have nothing this month for the president report, I apologize. Well, I'm sure we'll have something next month, for sure. Moving on to committees, the personnel committee. Dan, did you want to go over the personnel committee this month, or...
Yeah, I can. So you'll see very general and usual resignations and appointments across many areas. I want to thank again all the folks who go into making sure that we have those folks ready to appoint for these meetings. There's a long list of mentors on there. I do see some folks from the Teachers Association, Teachers Association out there in the audience, so thanks to them for the work on that. We do have a couple that we need to have another conversation about, but you have a long list. I think it's over thirty teachers that we're mentoring, either in year one or year two, or as an ambassador mentor, so that's a lot. And I would like to thank Mike for his work on that as well. We're very close, I think we're at thirty out of thirty-five set to go, and we'll have the other five likely for a special meeting that we're going to have to have to approve the tax rates next week anyways, once we receive them in totality from the county. So, just wanted to put that out there. We do have a couple of open positions that we're still trying to fill at each building, but it is not double digits. It's like single, one or two, in each of the buildings, to have a full squad. But again, thanks to all the people that worked hard in April, May, and June to get those positions ready for us to appoint. We're way ahead of where we were previously for the month of July. We're still pushing in August, trying to get the rest of these filled, but we're confident we're going to do so. We're going to do the best that we can. Everybody's having the same trouble. Each time I put something out about needing a chemistry teacher, four or five of my colleagues say the same exact thing. So if you know good people who are certified in science and math, we'd love to have them be part of our team here. Have them reach out to me, or Mike, or Kevin, or anybody they know here to talk about how great a place it is to work, and we'd like to have them on board.
Awesome. So if nobody has anything that they want to discuss on motion by consent, the board approves the personnel agenda. Do you want to abstain to the one line item?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to the audit committee. I'll start off this. We met last week, and for discussion, we had four or five line items. There was no treasury report for last month. The ECA balances for May... Get that for you here. Was one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-three. Any questions on the May ECA balances? For the June ECA balance, we are at one twenty-nine, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. And the ECA balance summary, Kevin, do you want to discuss that real quick?
Yep. Basically, the last basis, the ECA balance summary, that's, that's for the whole year. You can see the activity that takes place within those accounts, that's the total amount of receipt CMO, okay? And it's just kind of tying it together each month that we present to the board. The, so you can see when it comes to the yearly summary, that we had a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in receipts and a hundred and seventy, nearly a hundred and seventy-four thousand in disbursements this year. So you can see those, ECA is really ramped up this year, a lot of activity, which was nice to see after the last couple of years where there was barely anything in these accounts. So we do have some, as you can see, in a couple of accounts, there was no activity. So what we will be doing when the external audit is done with this audit, we will be cited on that. But we will be contacting, when everybody comes back in September, the advisors to see if they want to keep that account open, if they're still active, but just not collecting or spending money within those accounts as we move forward. If they're not active, we'll close them out.
Anybody have any questions on the, the ECA balance summary? Moving on to the audit corrective action plan. Kevin, you want to...
We have our internal audit completed, and it was for two different years. It was for the 21, 22 year, and also for the 19, 20 year. We had to catch that up due to COVID and the auditor not be able to come in once we shut the school down. So they did a purchasing audit, purchasing and claims processing. So that was a good audit to do, because that can fall through several years. So basically, this is the internal audit, which is different than the external audit. The external audit is done annually, and it's a more broad scope audit than the internal audit. What the internal audit does is they, they have a matrix, and they look at different areas where fraud can occur in a school district, the highest areas, which are generally where money is exchanging hands, or in this case, where bills are being paid. And then they go in, and they go into a more in-depth analysis, and they'll do more testing than is done in our regular annual audit. So this is done by Alan Prindle, from Alan Prindle CRMA Audit Services, A200 Audit Services. Just so everybody's aware, Alan's actually a former state controllers auditor. So he's retired, and he does this now, so it's, it's great to have that, that line coming through. And basically, so he did, he went through and did this audit. We did have three recommendations, which is part of our corrective action plan. So basically, he lists recommendations within the audit to strengthen things up, and then we have to do a correction, corrective action plan for that, basically describing how we're going to do that. And then we submit that to the state. So there were the three recommendations were mileage reimbursement claims need to be submitted by employees in a timely manner. At this point in time, we have some people that travel between buildings or go out to conferences, those types of things. They have mileage reimbursement forms, and they'll wait a month or two, or some wait six months or eight months for it to be a good amount. So the corrective action for that is we, we have a procedure which goes out to all employees. If you received a copy of the updated one, that they, that they have to be turned in within thirty days of one that's incurred, which will be his requirement. The second one was increased available credit on the district credit card for, to cover necessary obligations. As you recall, we already did this, this is the July meeting, by increasing from five to ten thousand dollars. And what that will allow us to do is when we do have a sports team or any group that has to go someplace, it will give us a line of credit that we can have them use the school credit card instead of having to bounce back and forth, pay bills quick, or hand out cash for lunches and things like that. So that's, that's already completed, so we're set there. And the last item was to formally adopt a disaster recovery plan. That's, that's from technology. At this point in time, that's going to be, we're going to present that to the board September and October for approval. That's being completed, it should be done within the next week. It just needs to be updated from, from last year. So that was part of a, that was part of, and that's also to be consolidated with all of our other safety plans and disaster plans are all going to be consolidated down in the district office, so that we will have a manual of that. That was one of the recommendations in there. So all in all, I'm happy with the audit. We've got these three, these three things, and one of them's done, and two of them will be done by September, so I think that, that we're lined up pretty good there. Does anybody have any questions? The board will, the board, everybody has seen the corrective action plan that was posted. We will have to have a motion in a second to approve that, so that we can send that in tomorrow to the state.
Okay. So if nobody has any questions, we'll take a motion on that. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves a corrective action plan for the, for the 2021-2022 school year. So moved by Crystal, seconded by Amanda, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries.
Yeah, one thing, one other thing, Jeff, we have a second one. And basically, what you're, what you're saying is that you're in receipt of the audit. That's, so...
Yep. As you heard by Kevin, regarding the received receipt from the audit, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District accepts the internal audit of the purchasing and claims processing services for the 2019 through 2022, and 2021 through 2022 school year. Do we have a motion? So moved by Crystal, seconded by Mark, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Okay, that's, I think that's all we had for the audit committee. Okay, moving on to the last committee meeting we had was transportation. Dr. Steele?
You can see the DOT report there. These district report, a couple of things I didn't want to read out loud, these landing items. So June 7th, we received our votes for two micro bird buses after contacting the bus company in New York's, New York Bus Sales. About the details of the delivery dates, we were informed that Ford, the maker of the buses, has yet to produce a chassis for this one. Assuming that means it'll take a little bit more time to work in those buses. Also, we have been accepted into truck voucher program from New York State, which, if I'm reading this correctly, increases the trading value of our diesel buses and... of our diesel buses and we have a new, more fuel-efficient emissions-friendly bus. We got approved, bus number 129 for that. Last item was on July 13. We got our final quote from Leonard Bus regarding our purchase of a 66-passenger bus, bus number 133, which the bus that that new bus is replacing, we take it out, service on August 4, and the new one will be put in when it arrives on August 15. There was one small minor incident when we had a bus back into a local business. You guys can read about that there, but very minor incident, no severe, no major damage. There's the diesel and gasoline propane prices like usual, and a little bit at the bottom there from Mr. Aaron Cooper. Just thank everyone there for his opportunity.
Great. Anybody have any questions, Dr. Steele? Okay. That concludes our committee The next slide item was a SmartBoard donation. If you had a chance to review that, it, the IT is requesting approval to offer up the 600 series 65 with, it's a projector. The purchase cost in year, was purchased in December of 2009 for $2,959. The estimated value right now is $500. And we're looking to donate that item to the World Awareness Museum. If anybody has any questions pertaining to that at all? If not, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the donation of the SmartBoard to the World Awareness Museum. That has been deemed surplus. Do we have a motion? So move by Vince, seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Opposed? That carries. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Ward, do you have anything? Okay.
Just, just a few items. Excuse me. I just want to bring your attention. I think everybody has a printed committee list at your space, at your seat. Just want to make sure that looks okay with everybody. Looking to have those be approved by consensus this evening by the board so we can move forward with that. We did schedule the meetings by going back and forth with the members. Thanks to Kelly for doing so. Some of those stayed the same. Couple of them changed a little bit. So please take a look at that and see if the committees you're on work for you and if the times work for you. And if we need to have a discussion, let's have it at this time. And there is a motion on there to approve it. So we'll have that discussion. I can move on with the other couple of bullet items on my report.
Okay.
Concerns with the committees?
So by consent, we can just-
We have a motion on here.
Okay.
Yep. So if there's no discussion or concerns, looking for a motion to approve the committee list.
Give me Rita. Seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
New faculty orientation. As you know, we added several new positions to our school district for our next school year to provide direct instruction and opportunities for our students. I'm happy to say, as I said before, we've been very lucky and we've gotten some great staff coming on. So that new faculty orientation is next Thursday and Friday. I know that, Jeff, you had mentioned wanting to come to that. Other board members, if anybody has any interest, what I normally say is that you're certainly welcome to come and do the introduction. Please do that and then go someplace else so we can get to the business we have planned for the day without folks thinking that board members are here to watch over us all day long. But I'm always happy to have board members come out. You guys have been here, many of you, all or most of your lives, and especially on the board for several years and have children to go to school here. I think it's great for our new people and the people who've been here, their mentors who will be here that day as well, to hear directly from the president if we can. But any other board member who wants to come and say a few words, you are welcome. And is that 8:15 or is it eight? Eight o'clock next Thursday in the band room here at the high school. So-
That's the thing we responded to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Someone coming on Thursday.
Yes.
Got it. So you're way ahead of me. That's great. Thank you. Glad to hear it. And lastly, just the Capitol project. My updates have had the information in there for you, but I just wanted to make sure I said it publicly. Had a little bit of an epiphany this summer where folks would say, hey, what about that construction you guys were talking about and we voted on a couple of Decembers ago? So that project, we are still moving forward. The advertisement for the bids is going in the newspaper. The bid packets go out on the 15th of August. We expect to have bids to open by September 22. After that, the board will be able to accept or not accept bids at the October meeting. And after that, the construction schedule will roll out. I do have a draft construction schedule, but I, I'm going to hold on to that for right now until we actually have the bids and see what work we can accomplish. But I want to thank the Buildings and Grounds team and Kevin, as well as our partners from Schoolhouse and our partners from March in repackaging and getting those bid packets ready to go out. And we're hopeful for good bids. We're living in some pretty difficult times for bids and constructions like that, but I'm, I'm still hopeful. So more information to follow as soon as I have it. You folks will have it. But for anybody who's out there watching publicly or the folks in the audience, no, we did not forget. It's just, we've had some delays like the rest of the world. I'm very hopeful that at this time next year, we'll be in a, or there'll be a brand-new seating area in our auditorium with new lights and sound system and those items that we have. For certain, we have ordered the seats through state contract because they're one of the longest lead times. But just in the last six months, those have escalated by about $7,000. So we locked in pricing so they don't escalate again on us in the next seven, in the next seven months before we can get them installed. So the seats are going to come. We aren't going to have to store them on site. They're going to allow us to store them at their warehouse once they come in. So long story short, that was a very long way to say, we are still going to do the project. It's going to look a little bit different. More details to come as soon as we see those bids again.
Is the bid opening?
22nd. I'll, I'll send it to the board. Yeah, 22nd of September. Normally, it's 30 days from when the package hits the streets. So that will be the 15th of September. But our team says that a lot of times contractors are asking for an extra week at the end. So we're planning for the extra week before we even start. So we're not scrambling later on to change dates with everybody. And we want to make sure we give the contractors as much time as we reasonably can so that they won't think they shouldn't bid because they're rushed and don't have time to prepare the proper bids. So we're giving them as much as we can to try to get the best result. And I'll send you an invite. I'll send you the invite, Mark. Anybody's welcome to come to that. It's public as well. So we'll send it out to the whole board. Kelly, can we do that?
Yep.
And that's, that's, that's what I had.
Okay. That's pretty much all we have for the evening, right? There's, we don't have any need for executive session. So we're, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So move, seconded by Crystal. All in favor? Opposed?
That's right.